Calling this meeting to order, this is a Redmond City Council Study Session held on Tuesday, July 9, 2024, commencing at 7:00 PM. Councilmembers in attendance are Councilmember Fields, Councilmember Salahudin, Councilmember Stewart, Councilmember Anderson, myself, Council Vice President Forsyth, and online, just checking, Councilmember Nueva Camina is on her way. And if Councilmember, Council President Kurtser joins us, I will announce. There are four items on the agenda tonight. Redmond 2050 Planning Commission Recommendations for Phase B, 2B and Phase 2C Comprehensive Plan Elements and Critical Area Regulations, Business Technology Investment Programs Update, 2025 through 2030 Capital Investment Programs CIP Review, and Council Talk Time. Before we get started, I'd like to take a brief moment of silence for the staff member who suddenly passed away overnight. Thank you, and if I may, I'd like to offer condolences on behalf of council to the entire First item on the agenda is the Redmond 2050 Planning Commission Recommendations for Phase 2B and Phase 2C Comprehensive Plan Elements and Critical Area Regulations. Carol Helen, Director of Planning and Community Development, will introduce the item.
Thank you, Councilmember Forsyth. Tonight, we are finishing, or actually continuing, our Redmond 2050 Study Session Discussion from July 2. And this is the Planning Commission Recommendation on Phase 2B and 2C, which includes, for tonight's discussion, land use, community development and design, and the natural environment. I am joined this evening by Seraphie Allen, Lauren Anderson, Lauren Alpert, and Becky Frye, and Glenn Coyle is joining us virtually online. I'm going to turn the microphone over to Becky.
Thank you. Good evening, council. The council questions from July 2, a staff report was included in your packet. Many of the questions were very simple, and we were able to respond. We're ready to discuss any of those items, but we felt that it might be helpful to provide some additional context for the centers. The center's designations have changed at both the countywide and the regional planning level. For instance, Overlake has been reclassified as a metro center, and the Marymore Village has been proposed to change from a local center to a countywide center. We also have the new proposed Southeast Redmond Countywide Industrial Center. So these centers that are approved through the county will, are reviewed and approved at that level. Downtown and Overlake centers are reviewed and approved at the regional level through PSRC. This does require some additional checklist and review process, but doesn't impact our ability to set the vision for these areas. But the new naming and the nomenclature has changed, so we've, just a little bit of background on that. The policies that are related to the center's character are provided in your packet. They're based on several years of community engagement, which started in late 2020. Community has expressed a desire that all of our centers have a different look and feel from a design standpoint, but they all should be pedestrian and bicycle friendly. So what that essentially came down to from community feedback, and what's reflected in the policies, is Overlake as a modern center with the intercultural district bringing a multicultural flair and feel. Downtown reflecting a Pacific Northwest style for regional architecture. Marymore Village being more eclectic and reflecting the importance of the area to our local tribes, as well as being an inclusive neighborhood. We'd be happy to answer any questions for this or any other topic on these chapters, and I'll turn it over for the study session. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions, or who wants to kick us off? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much for the introduction and the responses in the matrix. And it looks like we have a couple more we got to today. Thanks for starting off with the centers. I raised this question because it is that characterization of these areas that I really wanted to elevate for our council to discuss if we have, you know, any, any final thoughts on those, because they are significant. And as I read them in the chapter, it really shapes some of the things that, that might be hopes and dreams for those areas. Well, I'll kick it, I'll kick us off with one follow-up question, Becky, which is on the, in Southeast Redmond, and the eclecticness of, of that center. Could you say more about what that means?
Yeah. So when Marymore Village was-- Excuse me, sorry. When Marymore Village was adopted in 2017, that was actually a direction from council is to try to come up with something that was unique, that allowed for a little bit more variety, a little bit more color. And so a lot of that was really filtered through and is reflected in that sense of being an eclectic area. We're diving even deeper into that with the design standards updates, and you'll see that in the code updates for Marymore, as we look at making sure that no buildings right next to each other are the exact same or mimic the same patterns. So there's definitely more variety in that area. It looks a little bit more broken down and make, develops at different times instead of all at once. So we're working on what that looks like from the design standards perspective, but that would be reflected in the code updates that you'll see a little bit later this year.
Okay, thank you. As long as we have an operating understanding of what that word means, because it felt a little squishy to me, and yeah, I'd just love to hear from the council, do the characterization of these centers feel right to us, because they, a lot's gonna write on them, so thanks.
Councilmember Salahudin?
Yep. In being in Marymore Village, I, I do appreciate the word eclectic, leaving it a little bit open toward the diversity that, that is seen there, and I appreciate the work that's been done towards really ensuring that the buildings are, look different, feel different, and have the opportunity to, you know, feel unique there. So that's, I think, good characterization. I would add, you know, the proximity to Marymore Park, proximity to East Lake Semimish Trail, maybe, I know we emphasize natural materials, and this is really focused on the design as well, but including aspects toward, geared towards, you know, that proximity to nature and how that really resonates within the neighborhood there. So, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Fields?
Thank you. Just a tiny bit of my memory, and maybe it's accurate. Part of the reason we came up with that requirement or that ask for eclectic was because we were reacting to the initial downtown area, which was the same building, same building, same building, same building. So the council at that time was trying to address that issue and, and not continue with the same architecture on every single building. So it, it's a bit of a reaction.
Mm-hmm. I'm glad you said that, Councilmember Fields, because I was remembering the same thing, that it was a reaction at the time. I'm hoping that even the downtown is expressing some more design variability, as we're seeing. The other thing is, there was a temporal aspect to Southeast Redmond, because we did anticipate that there were lots of uses that would likely stay there in those tilt-up buildings. Some have been cleaned up and actually painted, and are being used for art studios and various different other uses that could, are benefiting from the probably lower rents than other locations. So the eclectic nature actually fed into that temporal aspect, as well as the unique architecture that I know the council was trying to get at in a reaction to some of the Redmond development downtown.
I'll follow up on that. So since, it was my understanding that that area was to be developed for more of like the artist loft kind of vibe, is that still in the vision as, I was kind of getting that, but not completely, so if we could speak to that a bit?
Yeah. When you get the Marymore package a little bit later this year, you'll see that is very much reflected in the vision for that area, including incorporating art into the building itself. So that is definitely one of the main emphasis for Marymore Village.
Great. So still maintaining the art, artist loft kind of living space?
Arts and Cultural District is something that we're exploring as a, the whole district concept, yeah.
Great, thanks. Any other thoughts, questions? All right, I will jump in with one more that I had. So in OV5, so Overlake, we talk about preserving the businesses, and a lot of those businesses in that area are diverse businesses, small mom and pops, and when we develop this, it is, it is traditionally an area that people will get squeezed out of. And those areas are more typically lower rent because they appear a bit less desirable. So what are we doing code-wise to ensure that we're going to be able to maintain those exact same businesses, maybe not exact, but the same type of businesses, and attract those same businesses into that space to maintain that feel?
Yeah. There's a couple of things that we're doing specifically in Overlake, but there's also some things that we're going to be doing citywide for anti-displacement and just relocation. In Overlake in particular, we've really emphasized the intercultural district as a way to reinforce that we need those businesses to stay in the community. And if we do have to assist them with making connections with developers, if the incentive program really highly emphasizes relocating those businesses and trying to phase things through. So the incentive program in particular, but all the work that we're doing with Philly Marshia Economic Development work is really emphasizing a lot of that. It's also going to play a really important part in Marymore as well, and in our areas that are regional retail that are transitioning to mixed use. So we are really heavily emphasizing working with existing businesses and their needs, trying to identify what they need, not just as a relocation assistance, but what do they need from a building standpoint? You know, your spatial needs to make sure that what we're looking at is new construction actually fits your needs. So I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Seraphie?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that I think, I feel comfortable with what we've placed in the code and everything we can do on the comp plan side. I think with the recent, well, soon-to-be recent economic development plan, we have set out some strategies more on the operational end, because that is where we see the largest challenge, is those businesses being able to transition into the new spaces that tend to be more expensive and not meeting necessarily their needs. And so we've actually been hosting some conversations with developers specifically to be thinking about particularly the business needs, but I would say it's more on the operations side than the code side, so.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Other questions? Comments, concerns? So are we good to close out this item? All right, not seeing any arguments there. So there were many questions that are scheduled to be returned to us for answers on the 23rd. Do we want to have a study session to review those answers, or do folks want to review those via email?
We, I just wanted to, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, it's okay. I just wanted to note that in the conversation I had ahead of time with Councilmember Forsyth, that we reviewed the questions, didn't have time to answer all of them before this evening because of the holiday, but we did review those and think that they aren't very robust study session questions. Our question to you is, would you like to get the time back on the 23rd? And we can very easily send out the issues matrix to you and answer any questions in that way, if you're interested.
Councilmember Fields?
This is the bad. So the question that I asked was on the incentives versus requirements. And I'm, and it wasn't, I asked for more information, I asked for a compelling argument. And at this point, I don't, I'm not certain that we've really tried to understand the need for not just relying so heavily on incentives. So this is kind of a philosophical question. If the council's not interested in it, and Director Helen or somebody else wants to meet with me separately, I'm happy to do that. But at this point, I'm reluctant to vote for anything that has not really looked at the alternative arguments and the alternative benefits of actually making some of our green standards requirements, as opposed to giving away all of our tax dollars. I mean, I've said this a number of times, so I'm not sure how else to say it, but. So whether that's a study session, or whether that's a private session, I, I don't care.
We can do either. The question that we raised was one that we noted was actually one that could gender, engender more conversation, and we can either do that and have a session like this one on the 25th, or we can also combine that question with a subsequent study session that we have that's really more focused on the code updates, which is where the incentives will live.
I'm okay with that, too, so.
Happy to do that.
But I'm, I'm not going to let it go.
Oh, of course not.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we did provide some additional information in what will get mailed out.
Great, thank you.
So I would invite you, if you review the additional information that we sent, if there's any more information that you would like or would like to refine the way we talk about that topic at the future session on Code, the Code, please contact me and we can--
Okay, thank you.
--talk about that.
Thank you. Any other thoughts? Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I would just hold some space for our colleagues. Several folks, when we had our staff report, acknowledged that they hadn't had time to review the materials yet, so these are some of the questions that came off the top, but for those who've, you know, I would want to leave space for additional questions or anything that's come up for folks now that they've had time to review the materials.
And again, I wanted to show that some, so if there are additional questions, or if the council reviews the information that we share and you determine you would like that additional study session, we can also try and accommodate that. We would just need to know by Monday morning, so we could submit a memo for that with the council. And so I think because, given the amount of questions we had tonight, we wanted to check whether we felt it was worth your time for that, or to delay some of the questions we knew would be coming at a later point anyways.
I recognize the worthiness of time, especially as we are on the crunch toward the end of this plan. Sometimes the council raises questions also for the ability for the public to, to hear the response and to hear the story, too. So there's, there is function and value in that. One of the topic areas that both Councilmember Salahudin and I had addressed was our plan relying so heavily in achieving our goals, because PSE is going to deliver a clean grid eventually. And so I would like the council to be able to hear more about any assurances, or otherwise, in a public session like this. And since this plan is driving us toward that, I saw this as an opportunity for that in a recent committee meeting with our Environmental Sustainability Manager Jenny Leibek. I think I raised this at one of her recent updates, because perhaps we could have that in committee, too, if we decided not to have the full study session on the 23rd. I also raised the question about volunteerism and wondered if the council had further thoughts on whether we felt strongly enough about that. That was just an, I didn't, I would just be curious if the council has thoughts on that.
Thank you. So I will jump in with my two cents, seeing no more hands. I'm, I'm for keeping it on the study session, and maybe, I'm looking at the extended agenda, and I see it's on for 60 minutes. Currently, we're at 17 minutes in this conversation, so maybe we just shorten it to 30 minutes, have space to have some more conversation. There's, I do have one note here about the proposed elimination of Design Review Board. I saw in the notes that the conversation for that is coming later, but I do think there's some merit to us potentially having some more conversation about that as well, and just giving us time to get at any of those questions, have any of those moments where we want the community to hear about what we're thinking about, and maybe we just shorten it to a, a brief 30-minute part of the agenda. Sound good? Councilmember Anderson?
Maybe I misheard this, if you might be able to repeat it if I did. If not, one of the, I'm looking in both of the matrices here. Did we talk about displacement of businesses? Or Bill, can you, can you repeat that one more time?
Forsyth asked a question about that.
Okay, and it's not on the matrix, but was there a place where I can refer to that?
The, the answer that we gave just now?
Yes, or you could repeat it.
We can send you something if you'd like on that, or add it to the issue matrix.
In the materials, yeah, I was just looking for the written version of it.
I think we can add it. I also feel like it might have come up in other ones, so we can comb through and make sure that it's represented in the issues matrix.
Thank you, that'd be appreciated, thank you.
Thank you. Any other thoughts? Good with shortening the amount of time. Mayor Bernie?
No problem with that, but just so you know, there won't be a new packet, this, the, there won't be a new PowerPoint or new packet with it, it will just be a continuation of this conversation.
Sure. Yep. Everyone amenable to 30 minutes on the 23rd for continuation of the answers that we are anticipating?
Sorry, Councilmember Forsyth, can I ask a clarifying question?
Absolutely.
Just to ensure, so we have these answers, and some of them you mentioned also for the other ones, they are pretty informational, as you mentioned, particularly some of them will be in the packet. It's not something that we would be reviewing or presenting, so then it would be incumbent on council to be sharing what that information is for the public, so I just wanted to make that clear right for the 23rd, or--
Yeah, that's typically how it works. We receive the information on Friday afternoon, and we come to these meetings prepared to have a discussion. Sometimes that's us discussing and needing to get technical feedback from you all, or elevating things that need to be said aloud for the public. That's, that's a function of our, of our work. Thanks.
I just want to ensure, because we have the responses and whatnot, and make sure--
Yeah, and the matrix being included in the packet is another way that the public can view the materials, that, if they're following along in these meetings. Yeah. Cool, thanks.
Great. I think we have our direction, yes? Great. Thank you so much. Thanks, everyone. All right, and next we move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Business Technology Investment Program, or BTIP, update. And we'll give a moment for Kelly Cochran, Finance Director, to introduce the item when she is able to get up here.
Hi.
Hi. I'm Kelly. You guys knew that.
Thank you. I know we were a little quick on that one, so appreciate--
I really am.
All right, while we wait for our staff member to come down, does anyone have anything that we might end up talking about at good of the order? All right, I will go ahead and give a plug for Derby Days this weekend, Friday and Saturday. 11:00 AM is the parade, and 10:10 is the start of the drone show, which will be always exciting, so hope folks can join us for the fun and festivities.
Councilmember Salahudin?
Thank you. In coordination with Eastside Audubon for the migratory bird watching, they had to unfortunately cancel today because of the, the heat, but all in everyone's best health, we'll be rescheduling that, and Deidre and I will be coordinating just potential dates throughout the, throughout the year that they recommend or they suggest.
Great, thank you for that update. I was glad they rescheduled for the heat. All right, we look like we are about ready. Come on up. Thanks for shuffling a little bit, we'll still have time for talk time at the end.
Good evening, council, and thank you for your patience. We are here tonight to present to you our Business Technology Investment Program plan for the next biennium and the years following. Tonight, Haritha will present to, Hrethanara will present to you the financial strategy for the Business Technology Program, and Director Marchand, and Carmen Hall, who is our project manager, manager--
Project manager?
Yeah. Office manager. And she's done a great job really helping us to elevate this program. Really what our goal is, is with the Business Technology Program, is to get to the same point that we are with the Capital Investment Program, so that we really have the ability to be looking out several years, tracking where we're going, and really have a line of sight into what the future holds, allowing us to develop financial strategies and sort of cross-departmental work towards some of these efforts. So appreciate her work, and it's just getting better and better. So I'll hand it off to these folks.
Thank you, Director Cochran. See, we didn't rehearse this one, so, sure. CIO Michael Marchand, I'm here with Carmen Hall and Harithan--
Naral.
Naral, sorry. Go through our, to do our first look at the 2025, 26, and beyond BTIP. All right, you want to go ahead? Are you serious? Technical difficulties, okay, sorry. Brief agenda, we'll start off with an overview of what BTIP is. I have a quick overview of our existing projects and their status, a look at our 25, 26 BTIP projects, and the projects on our, on our radar for 27 through 30. Brief description of what BTIP is for our new council members, so essentially like Kelly had mentioned, Director Cochran had mentioned, it supports our long-term planning initiatives, and allows us to really strategically align the work that TIS is doing with the objectives of the organization and the different business units across the city. So serves as a sort of a common source of truth for planning of technology initiatives, and it really helps us build a stronger and more secure technology platform. This is a brief review of the projects that were in our 23, 24 BTIP. This is the same slide we showed during a FAC meeting last month. You can see we've got a few projects that have been completed. Our AV infrastructure across the city, our conference rooms work that's been completed, implementing our new parks management system, Amelia Springbrook, which is a utility billing platform, police conference or training room upgrade, and a case management platform for homeless outreach. Number of projects in flight, including our, our legendary D365 project, we're on Phase 2. Workforce management, which is our HR platform, also on Phase 2. CIP, our Capital Investment Program Project Management Platform, that one's currently in flight, where we've selected a platform with our partners in Public Works and are busy planning, we're moving forwards towards an implementation. Development Services Platform Modernization, so this is our EnerGov platform, we've kicked off an, an effort to move it to the cloud and re-implement it in a simplified streamlined manner to make a more, a more efficient, more effective user experience for both the public and for internal users. Environmental Sustainability Dashboard Collection Platform, currently in flight, work is ongoing. Asset Works Data Management, that's a project to move our Asset Works platform to the cloud and to implement a vehicle telemetrics platform to provide real-time data from fleet vehicles to the system. And a lifecycle assessment tool, this is a tool that I believe council had an interest in, and is to help evaluate the environmental impact and sustainability of various initiatives across the city. Windows 10 replacement, that's bringing us up to Windows 11, that's currently in flight. And then three projects here that haven't yet started, but were slated to happen in the upcoming biennium. Little bit more information on projects here that are currently in flight that have already gone through, you know, different departments they're in, all within budget still, and all currently on their, well within their timelines. These are, again, a little bit more in-depth look at the projects that were slated to work on in 25, 26, so our couple of, our Asset Works Data Management, finishing off that project to move it to the cloud and implement the telemetrics. Migrating Lucidity, which is our other asset management platform to the cloud, the lifecycle assessment tool, and an upgrade to Council Chambers, so we're going to upgrade and replace the AV equipment in this room with modernized equipment, and hopefully buttons that work consistently. All right, so this is our look at the 25, 26 projects that we have proposed to bring forward. This is just a brief summary, I'll, I'll go through, each one of these projects has more in-depth slide, and thank you, Haritha, we'll go right into the first one. No, that's okay, it was just a summary. So the first project here, our IQ Geo Fiber Management Platform, this is a project in support of Public Works and their work to manage the city's fiber infrastructure across, across the city. Currently, a lot of this work happens manually using CAD software. This project will centralize it all into a single platform, integrate with the GIS system, and create a more streamlined, efficient process, help reduce the risk of knowledge loss. I think we have a couple of key individuals in Public Works who, who have all the knowledge on how this manual process works, so this will get us to a more sustainable and efficient If there's, if anybody has, I guess I should say, if anybody has any questions, it's easy to go through, because there's, there's a number of them, feel free to interrupt, so. All right, next one.
Any questions? Councilmember Anderson?
Sure.
Excuse me, this is the file that you sent us by email, not the one on our agenda. Okay, great, I think I'm looking at the wrong one, thank you.
Okay, next slide. So this, this proposal is for building an innovation team, so what I'm proposing, or what we are proposing to do here, is to create a team within TIS dedicated to innovative -- dedicated to innovative technology development. So this is where I'd really like to have us focus on using specifically AI technology to develop tools that will help the city innovate, help it be more effective, more efficient, streamline processes. This is something different, something new that we don't currently do. We have folks within TIS who do limited development work, but we don't have a dedicated development team that can really focus on partnering with our business units across the city, understanding the challenges they face, and coming up with innovative solutions. We don't currently have a budget line item, I think, in, in the, in the B-Tip for this one that maybe Director Cochran can, can address a little bit.
Sure. So we are waiting until we have a full accounting of what our one-time dollars will be, until we can determine the size of investment in this innovation team. There is a lot of one-time asks, and so we'll, we'll need to get through those to determine the level of priority and the level of funding that we can apply to this. So waiting for the budget process decisions to be made. I'm certainly interested in council's thoughts.
Any questions? Councilmember Sal Houdin.
Yep. Thank you. Excited about the opportunity to look at and implement potentially artificial intelligence and AI where, where we can. My question would be specific to, you know, once we have a team, would that team really be focused on identifying potential vendors for solutions, or would they be building out solutions in-house? So, you know, would that be incorporated into the management as well?
Yeah. So the intent or the vision with this team is really to build tools, so it'd be like a software development team. So rather than going out there and looking, identifying pre-built, off-the-shelf solutions, this would be a team who, who would work with a business unit and identify challenges or areas where they could do something innovative, where there's not currently a solution on the market, and build. One, one example that I've seen a couple of jurisdictions do is using AI to develop an intake process for their building permits. So rather than having building permits or different types of permit applications come in and go through a fully manual review process, you can use AI to do some of that initial review and identify, you know, common things that, that perhaps are issues and deal with them automatically. That's just one of, you know, any countless different, different ideas that we could do.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields, did you have a question?
So this seems like more of a scouting party to me. It's like you're not really sure which department, which discipline, which area of business operations, but you're going to go look for ideas, and then you're going to bring it back to the experts in public services or planning or finance, and then say, hey, here's some possibilities. How could, how could this help? Is that...
Yeah. That's really, really is part of the vision. I know we've got a long list of different ideas that I've heard from my colleagues across the city on, on different places where they could focus their attention on, some specific, you know, brainstorming ideas that, that can sort of spark that initial thought process, but then really, you know, dive in and figure out where's, where can we get the biggest bang for our buck? And then, you know, collaboratively come up with a decision that, okay, the team's going to spend, you know, six months, nine months a year focused on this particular challenge. Yeah. And as far as the ongoing funding and how the program is sustained, you know, my initial vision of it is, you know, partly speculative in one way to start off with. This is a four-year, a four-year investment. Let's build the team. Let's have them go out there and find some of these things, identify places where we can make improvements, and then, you know, see what they come back with and see what kind of things they build. There's different ways to fund it on an ongoing basis. They could be funded as B-Tip projects. One of the more lofty goals that I have, or that I thought is a possibility, is if they can create a tool or create a solution that really is unique, and there is not a market out there, figure out a way that we could market it to other jurisdictions. There are other cities in the area that, that have done that, and they've, you know, been very successful in, in developing tools and marketing them. So it's definitely another possibility for how we could sustain this group.
I, I like the idea, and I think this type of technology deserves that first. The only comment I would make, and I'm always reluctant to give advice to experts, but I do it all the time. You really want to document. This, this is one where people are, ideas are hard to document.
No.
So this is something where you have to make that extra effort to document the discussions and the ideas and the things that you came up with. Otherwise, it's going to be difficult to pass it along.
Absolutely. And that, that would be probably the first, first one of two key individuals that I'd want to recruit for this is, is one, I, I use the label manager, but the leader of the team, and I'm going to look for somebody who's very innovative, somebody who's perhaps comes from a startup environment, somebody who has that creative, innovative spark, and the analytical ability to, to talk to people and flush out those ideas and document them. So that would be probably job number one. And then, once we've identified some of those different ideas, bring in the development team to build them.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much. Appreciate hearing about your direction on this and actually really appreciate you. I was confused when I saw in the packet with the zero dollars, but to understand that, you know, you're still analyzing the opportunity, I appreciate having kind of the preview on that. I, I have a question that I get from community all the time, because actually, some of what you've described, I'm just going to name the elephant in the room, is we are sitting in Redmond, Washington, right? And we have dozens, hundreds, maybe thousands of community members who work in this exact field, living in all of our neighborhoods across the city. So I actually get this question quite frequently, you know, about our relationship to major corporations who are in development of this, volunteer opportunities. I've been asked about a few times. So obviously, as you're beginning to map out a business case for a development team here in-house, what have you explored and ruled out? Can you give us any sense of like, community involvement as a unique asset we have here in Redmond, and your thoughts so far on that?
So, yeah, we have done a little bit of community outreach. We did, we did attempt to do a project about a year ago, working with a local community member. Part of the difficulty in those is a lot of these projects take a lot of time. They also require some, some interaction and some collaboration on the inside from TIS members or different people across the city. The one that we did attempt to, to make some traction with, it had some limited success, so that the, the partnership created a tool, but then the person who we were working with left the community, so it kind of came to a bit of a standstill. But you're, you know, you're absolutely right. And one of the things that I've sort of thought is an idea to help bolster this team would be partnering with some local universities, colleges. There's lots of, you know, students that are, lots of universities and colleges that are offering AI training, AI development courses. And this would be a perfect opportunity for some of those students who, who are fresh out of school with, with new skills, which, which we need for this type of work, and different ideas where, you know, they could serve as interns, they could, they could work with us, first job out of college, work for a reasonable salary that would be aligned with the types of salaries you would offer here, so.
We hear the challenge in that, too. Thanks so much. It's helpful to hear where you're thinking on that, or like what your thoughts have been thus far, because again, it is a question we get from the community. So thanks.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. My question was similar to Ms. Stewart's, actually, and I appreciate that she took the time to ask that. It does say the proposed team, and I'm curious if there has been work that's been invested in terms of developing something so far? If we could get maybe a written summary of that when this comes up in budgeting, so we can understand how much progress we've made? I would love to hear a little bit more about how AI is being used in the city. My understanding was it's sort of initiated, and we're taking a look with this step that's being proposed of what we can do next. So I would just really like to see a little bit more background on this particular proposal.
Background of the context of what specifically we're proposing?
Yeah. And you said also that, that you've done some work already, and I wouldn't want to just say, you know, that's, you, you want to take something that you started with and move forward with that. So if that's also an innovation team could say no, right? But that's, my understanding of this would be that you're proposing to ask for some funds. We would get to discuss what it would be, and then there should be existing work that's gone into this proposal initially. So I'd just like to see where that came from. That would be appreciated.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will jump in with a couple of my questions. So thanks for the further conversation and the great questions from council. I've got a much clearer picture that this is going to be adding staff members, limited term capacity. Love the idea of, we've, we've talked about a lot of inviting students and having like a hackathon, so maybe we could get additional ideas through those kind of efforts. Love that you're already thinking about that. The question I have for council on this is policy development around AI. We've talked about it a lot. We've talked about data privacy. We've talked about facial recognition privacy. So I think that's my big question for how does this team collaborate with council on AI policy and ensuring that we're moving those policies forward? If you already have ideas, love to hear it, or that can come later in the budget conversation.
Sure. Thanks for the question. So we do have an initial policy that we've drafted. We're in the final stages of just putting the final touches on it. So that, that would be something that's coming forth in the near future. But absolutely, you know, the, the work that this team would do would absolutely align with, with that policy and any others that we would develop moving forwards.
Great. Thank you. I'm, I will add that I'm excited about the potential with this team, especially given the numerous amount of languages that are spoken in our community, and the ability to have a lower barrier for folks to get involved in government.
Absolutely.
Any other questions on this one? All right. Moving on.
All right. So this next project, it's a, it's a smaller project, but it's an impactful one. So this is, a smart sheet is a tool that our project management office and various other stakeholders across the city use. This is really to increase the licenses on that and to add on a module that'll help with automating the creation of templates and automating project management processes.
Any questions on this one? All right.
All right. The next one here is a cashiering system update. So this is really, the city uses a cashiering platform that's, while the platform itself is not nearing end of life, the connector that we use to integrate it with other systems is. So this is to help us find a new cashiering tool, or to adapt one of the other cashiering tools used from other platforms. And also, you know, not only addressing that, but make it a more streamlined, effective process, help eliminate some of the manual processes that currently are required with the existing cashiering system.
Councilmember Stewart.
I think community loves the new registration system for parks and rec programs. How will that software subscription be impacted by this change in the cashiering system?
So that is one we would probably include as, as an analysis to see if that's one that could be adapted to other systems. That was a key point that came up when we were implementing Amelia, was that it, it does have a cashiering platform, and it's something that could theoretically be leveraged with other platforms. I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect that if we implemented something else for the other systems that it would replace the one in Amelia, because that one works, works quite well, so.
Sure. Yeah. Just on those resident-facing platforms to have less change and keep things that are really, really great and folks love. So, cool. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? I will jump in with mine. So the cashiering update, system update, is this for internal services and external services?
Yes. It could be. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All righty. The next one. Data, excuse me, data integration and centralization. So this is really a data management project for our colleagues in Public Works. They have multiple different data, data stores from different sources and different types, and this is to really bring it together into a centralized platform that'll make it easier to do reporting, run analytics. You know, some of the different use cases would be for environmental planning and that sort of thing. So this is really a clean up the data, bring it together, and make it more usable, make it more digestible, and more easily to report on.
See no hands?
So utility tax collection. So this is essentially a portal service for, for our community and for, for internal users as well to streamline tax, tax, tax collection services.
Councilmember Stewart.
Is this a tax we currently collect?
Yes. I believe so.
We currently do. Most agencies have file local, and it is easier for them to collect and track and apply penalty charges when they're due. At this point, we are sort of a mail it in or send it in, and so we could really use help streamlining that. And I think it'll improve our revenue collection.
Follow-up on that. Would that then, would our policy on the collecting the credit card fees then apply to that as well for the utility tax, or is that not allowed via tax structure?
Most, so these are taxes that are paid for, like Puget Sound Energy, the taxes they paid for. Typically, they don't use credit cards, and they, the way that they come in, no, we wouldn't apply a credit card fee to them.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Sal Houdin.
Thank you. So the reason I asked my previous question along, like in-house development or, you know, going out for current services, this sort of relates to that, where would things that we, we see here potentially be, if, if the innovation team would come up with solutions, would these be replaceable? And looking throughout, are there investments that we, when we forecast, you know, the one-time investment, right here, it says $177,000, whereas the annual cost is $10,000 annually, it's, you know, not super high, but that first-time cost, would that be, you know, seeing the innovation team be two years out, three years out? Would this cost be able to be preserved if we waited for that team? Just thinking, you know, not knowing what, what the scope of the team is fully.
Yeah. I think that part of the intent really with the innovation team is to create things that aren't currently on the market. So if there's, if there's an out-of-the-box solution that meets all of our needs, that has all the requirements that we need, that's typically the preferred path. The cost of doing custom work is always, is almost always going to be higher, so you have to maintain the team, you have to keep, keep that knowledge present, and you have to maintain the tool and build them. And it's usually, if it's something, a commodity-type service or something that you can buy, I think that the preference would be to, to go that route, and then use the innovation team for really identifying ways, tools, or add-ons, or modules that, that really aren't out there, and that would be Redmond-specific or local government-specific, so.
That's really helpful. Thank you.
Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you. Have we started thinking about policy around like, to say that something isn't out there? I mean, you know, it's kind of like my kids going to the pantry and being like, nope, didn't find the rice, mom. Didn't see it out there. And, and I use that jokingly, however, you know, it's like, well, have we created policy to, to put that check in to say, you know, this is, this is the due diligence that we're doing? Because, as you said, as soon as we go custom, then that is going to have the overall cost be considerably higher.
I'd have to double-check and see if we do have a policy related to that. I think it's, it's definitely a sort of a standard practice within, within TIS. So, you know, I, given that we don't currently have a development team with it, it's usually not too much of a question. But for my own best practices and, and what I would envision doing forward, policy or no policy, is that, that would always be the practice. But it's, it's certainly something we could look at, visiting and seeing if there's a way to codify something like that in a policy, so.
Great. Thank you.
All right. And the next one is a police drone program. So this is really to expand and enhance the existing drone program in public safety by implementing the Brink platform. And essentially, this is to, to, you know, partner with a local provider. The drones that, that public safety are currently use are manufactured by a foreign company. There's actually a new, I believe, federal law going into place that governs the use of drones, and the drones manufactured by specifically, I think, Chinese companies are going to be difficult or impossible to use in this sort of a function, even in consumer space. So this is to adapt, this is to really partner with a local provider, bring in new, new drones that, that comply with those rules and provide increased functionality over the current ones.
Councilmember Fields.
I don't see the expand and enhance in any of the description under benefits or approach or status. Expand and enhance, to me, sounds like you're going to do more than what you're currently doing. What I'm reading is you're going to do the same thing with different equipment and software.
Yeah. I think, I think the expand and enhance is really in the functionality that the drones have and the capabilities of them. I'd have to get, do you have any further data on that one?
We're green. Okay. I think one of the opportunities, when we talk about expanding and enhancing, a little bit greenfield on, on building something with Brink, they're a relatively new player to this space, and that they're excited about developing this with us. So the expand and enhance is really opportunistic on things that the city might need and the public safety might need, working with that vendor and that provider. I don't know that there is a, a specific roadmap. There was not a specific roadmap when this was submitted, but I know that it is an upside and considered a benefit of this partnership. that it is an upside and considered a benefit of this partnership.
I still don't, I'm sorry, I don't understand your answers. Expand and enhance means we're going to, in my mind, this is, has been in the past a touchy topic for council because we're always concerned about intrusion into privacy and using it for things that we didn't anticipate or weren't stated in the beginning. So when, when I see you're updating your capabilities, then the question becomes, what are you going to do with those capabilities? So expand and enhance has a meaning to me that I'm not hearing what that, what those things are.
So to address the expand and enhance, so it will be an expansion of the program as far as the number of actual drones that we have, the number of launch locations, and an expansion in the capabilities around the technology aspect. This particular, if you want to call it a program or software as a service that we are exploring, it has a thing called Live 911. It has an integration of multiple systems as part of our drone-as-a-first-response program. So that expansion is expansion in technical capabilities of drone-as-a-first-responder and enhancement in the drone-as-a-first-response program by incorporating this particular platform. As was previously mentioned, it also moves us to a local, American-made platform as opposed to the Chinese platform, which has some concerns, both at the federal level, local level, et cetera. So we're getting, I'll say, in front of that concern and/or issue. And then also it allows us to, in this potential partnership with the local company, to provide our, if you want to call it technical expertise or our testing and evaluation of these technologies in this particular space for law enforcement. So it's very innovative, you know, in that sense. We are the only department here in Washington that actually has a drone-as-a-first-response program. It is being very well received, both locally and nationally, for this innovation, for this, you know, utilization of this type of technology and system for public safety.
Can we go to the second question? Currently in contract review, I, I don't remember. I'm sure somewhere this has been brought to council. I just don't recall. Why would we be doing a contract review if council hasn't approved the program?
So as far as the contract review portion of it, so yes, we do have a draft of a contract that will be coming forward as part of the budget process or part of our normal process when we are ready to actually move forward and potentially enter into a contract. So I would say maybe the, the wording is ahead of the process, but a contract will most likely be coming forward for review through our, our normal processes.
I could add a little bit to that as well. So before any technology project comes to council, we always go through and do a security review. We do a technology review just to make sure that we're not presenting something to you that's got security gaps in it or that's not going to be, be compatible and work within our current technology infrastructure, so.
Right. That's kind of what I thought I was asking is, I don't remember seeing, again, if it's, if it's just a replacement of the existing drone program, then it's a replacement of the existing drone program. But if you're going to do more and if you're going to, even it sounded like chief that you're expanding it geographically, I think, that you're going to do, use it in more locations. But any of it, it, it feels like it's potentially a major change in this technology, which would then include major changes in policy and that you're already doing a contract review catches me off guard and surprises me. So, well, I'll let it play out and I won't continue. So, thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I just went and looked it up because we did have a study session on the drones as the first responder program, and that was on April 9th, for anyone who wants to go back and take a look. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm going to follow up on that as well. So I'm all, I'm all for making sure we're moving towards federal regulations and ensuring that we're keeping in compliance with that. But I, I share the sentiment of Councilmember Fields of if this is expanding the program, I have concerns, especially since we haven't fully funded our public safety with the failure of the levy last year. And I feel like funding the personnel might be a better solution than finding more technological solutions, even though those could relieve some of the staffing issues. So I think I just want to know more information about, about this and more information on the data of how the current drone show is being used. I know we talked about it in the past, but maybe an update on that would be very helpful for our conversations. Any other questions on the police drone program topic? All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The next project we have up is, it's Genetek, which is the manufacturer of security system hardware replacement. This is largely a lifecycle replacement project and it's to replace and update security infrastructure in city facilities. So the door, the door locks, the video cam, the surveillance cameras, various security infrastructure.
Councilmember Slahudin?
Seeing that we just recently opened the Redmond Senior and Community Center, would this also change things there or would it?
No, that, that would be.
Is that up to date?
Outside the scope, yeah.
Oh, okay. Perfect.
Seeing no other questions?
Great. The next two here are really scoping projects. So for the 25, 26 biennium, we, we have a couple of projects here that we know we want to do in perhaps the next coming biennium. And this is really projects, they're RFI, RFPs, to scope those out a little bit. If you want to go to the next slide, we've got a little bit more detail. So the first one is contract management system. So this is, you know, determine the best solution for a comprehensive contract management system, central repository for all the city contracts. Nope. Did you go too far? And help manage our legal requirements for retention and public access. And really, this, this project, as it is specified here, is to, to do that research, do the market research, to gather the requirements, partnering with a contractor we've used in the past for these types of initiatives, put together an RFI, RFP, get those responses and, and figure out what the best solution would be for moving forward.
Any questions on that one? Not seeing any.
Great. And then this is.
Sorry, Councilmember Anderson?
Is that a staff salary that we're seeing there for just a person or is that a contract value?
That would be a contract.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And the next one here is enterprise content management. So this is, again, to determine the best solution for a citywide document records management platform. Largely, this is, you know, to provide a central repository for all the city contracts. Right now, we've got documents that are stored in multiple different locations. Sometimes, you know, when it comes, comes to different types of initiatives, maybe a discovery request or just simply trying to figure out where, where certain documents are located. It can be a little bit time-consuming. So this, this gives us a single place that would be a single repository for, for documents of all sorts. And again, this is again, sort of a research project. It's really to contract with the vendor, gather the requirements, do an RFI, RFP, and figure out what the best solution is for the city.
Councilmember Fields?
First, the contract management system, yay. Really appreciate the executive office and whoever is driving that because I think it's a few years overdue. Enterprise contact management, didn't we do something? I remember when I first was on council, the city clerk was, I think she was the project manager. Has that, did we not do anything? Or are you picking up the pieces from whatever that was or?
So there was a, there was one of the big four projects that was related to this and the funds for that, it, it was before my time, but my understanding is a portion of that was used to adapt Laserfish, which is used in public safety. A portion of that was to develop SharePoint, which we use for, for considerable amount of document management and some other sort of small-scale projects. But a, but a single platform, an enterprise content management platform for the citywide use was never identified. So I think in the last budget cycle, that project was canceled because we really didn't have a clear vision. We didn't have the clear requirements. We didn't have enough information to move forward. And this is, as you mentioned, kind of picking up the pieces and revisiting it to do it the right way, so.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Seeing no other questions?
All right. And this is a look at the projects that we are projecting for 27 through 30. So I don't, I don't have individual slides for each one of these because they're not, not fully, fully flushed out. But there, you know, some of these projects that we want to really focus our attention on, contract management system, the enterprise contact, content management platform. So these are, again, estimates based on the outcome of those RFI, RFPs. These are estimates that we believe a project, the size and scope of, that would be the size and scope that the city would require would fall into. The next one, First Nations lived experience. So this was a, a project that was brought forward by our DEI office. And it, it really requires some scoping out, but it's, the vision is really some sort of an experience that reflects and provides information to the community about the First Nations experience and history in, in the Redmond area. So, you know, we've done some brainstorming on what it could look like, whether it's a web experience or some sort of a VR experience. But really, this is, this is, again, to really scope that out, to, to gather those ideas, do some research, figure out what would work, what wouldn't work, really get to the, to the, to the essence of what we're trying to do here and, and put together a proposal. And the first one, and then the second one is, is again, it's, it's an estimate with, based on some of the brainstorming that we've done on what it could look like, on what a potential cost would be. D365 CRM. So this, this B-tip planning cycle, we had a number of requests for customer relationship management platform. It's really, you know, these are platforms such as, you know, you might have heard Salesforce that allows you to manage interactions with members of the community in the business. Salesforce, it's, you know, sales contacts that they would manage. Here, it could be, you know, interactions with members of the community on different, different types of subjects or initiatives. And really, this is, this would be a very large project, evidenced by the dollar amount there. So it's really, we, we would love to visit it sooner, but based on the current load of projects, finishing D365, finishing our HR project, the CIP project, this was just one that we couldn't fit with our, with our current capacity. Planning analysis tools, these are a set of GIS and data analysis, analysis tools that the planning department has requested. Again, this is a capacity issue, not so much financial as much as, well, Kelly can say the financial piece, but I think it was more of a capacity from the TIS perspective. The tools that were requested have a pretty substantial overhead as far as a training and, and technical skills. So we wanted to push that one out a little bit. Windows 11 replacement, so looking into the future for whatever the replacement for Windows 11 will be, 27, 28 timeline. And then another one for our public safety folks, the CAD, which is their computer-aided dispatch replacement. Currently use the Spillman platform and there's a desire to look for something more modern, more effective and providing more capabilities that police are looking for.
Any questions on any of that? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. I think that wraps up the, the project lists. And so I actually wanted to ask a question about a category of projects that I, I didn't see in the list, and that's around security. So if I am not seeing any major investments in security in the B-tip for the next few years, that leaves me to believe that we have everything we need. And I just wanted to check that assumption with you.
So we do have a couple of service enhancements that are going forward through the baseline budget process that are, that are related to security. There's a couple of new security tools and enhancement for our know-before phishing, reporting simulations, and another one for our Service Operations Center application to enhance some of the functionality in there. So could always use more. We, we do have a fantastic security program, but you're right, there's always, there's always more we can do and we are, we're bringing some of those forward, so.
Okay, so we'll look for that in, in the enhancements conversation. Great. Thank you.
Great. I will add that I am excited by the First Nations lived experience project. I think collaboration with parks and maybe an AR experience where you can use your phone and look around is a great way to honor the history of Redmond. I mean, we have art, found artifacts that were right here in Redmond. So I think that's a very fun project and I look forward to that in the future.
Absolutely. Thank you. And I think we've got one more slide here. And really, this is just a look at, on the timeline and, and again, chart project view to show where these projects would fit. Sorry for the really small font, but it's just to sort of show that, yes, we can do it and this is what it will look like. Yes, we can.
The last slide is mine. So this is how, how it looks like in terms of all the B-tip programs that were discussed just today by Director Marchand. Majority of the fund, majority of the projects have been kind of adopted during our 23, 24 budget process and they are bleeding into 25, 26. So majority of the funding is coming from the fund balance that is in the B-tip programs. So about 61% of it. And there are few projects that can be funded by Capital Equipment Replacement Fund. For example, the Genetech, Genetech hardware replacement, security hardware replacements can be funded by our Capital Equipment Replacement Fund based on our policy there. And 31% of our projects in 25, 26 is proposed to be funded by General Fund and 2% about Fleet Fund, especially for the asset works and lucidity projects. Looking at future and from 27 to 30, this is how our pie chart looks. You know, you can see that our general fund contribution is increasing to 58%. Still, we can continue to cover some of these projects with the general, with the TIS balance. And again, Capital Equipment Replacement Fund and Fleet Fund. Any questions?
Questions? Councilmember Stewart?
I, thank you Deputy Director Hara for mentioning, Nara, for mentioning the, the change in the reliance on the general fund. So, quick math here, but the reliance on the general fund in the 27 to 30, 2027 to 2030, it's, that dollar amount is almost the size of the entire program for 25, 26. So not only is the whole thing growing, but the reliance on the general fund is growing. I guess, you know, for due diligence, are we concerned about any sustainability of that, given the other demands on the general fund?
Do you want to talk about that, Kelly?
Yes. So Director Marchand.
Thank you. No, I appreciate it.
Director Marchand and I have been talking about that, about the, the balance of that program. And that is why we're so intent on, on building it out and really seeing what it looks like. A lot of what you are seeing in the pie graphs represents staff time and, you know, that grows for us on an annual basis. And once, once you can attach that to project work, it, it is, you know, easier to, to justify and absorb as part of the pro, projects. So where we are right now is that staff time is outpacing project, project costs. And so that's something that we'll be looking at in the next biennium to make sure that we've got our projects and our program right-sized. And we'll be looking at options. Still very much on the development side of the B-tip program. So I have a feeling that once we recognize additional projects that we are likely missing, staffing is probably right. And then it's a funding issue for us to figure out. But we are planning to focus on that in the next biennium. For 25, 26, even 27, 28, I think that we are good. It's when we get into those outer years that it's, it gets a little messy.
Sure. Okay. Thanks. It's helpful to hear how you're thinking about that. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Fields, reluctantly?
So on the topic of budget, do you expect somewhere along the lines you will be making estimates of cost savings or cost mitigation from some of these efficiency programs? Because there, quite a few of them are about that, the data programs in particular.
Yes.
And you'll let council know?
We have found it particularly interesting when looking at other programs. So we've made a lot of investments around the city for environmental sustainability. We've put new heat pumps in. We've put new types of infrastructure in a lot of the streetlights. And you can really see those savings and start capturing them and reinvesting them. So my hope is with what we've learned on the capital side, even the environmental side, that we would apply the same. side, that we would apply the same.
Great, I appreciate that. And then, second part of that question is risk management. I don't know what your contingency is on these projects, but when you get closer to it, can you share the risks? I know these are not major programs like we've done in the past, but they still have a certain amount of risk, right?
Absolutely, yeah. You know, as we get closer to them, we can definitely share them. The projects that we've identified here, for the most part, are relatively small, and the risk levels are relatively low. The innovation team, obviously, is an outlier, but for the most part, I think we've got a baseline contingency around 10--
20%.
20%. 20%, yeah.
Yeah, we baselined it at 20, and then went in and adjusted based on the size of the project for this exercise.
Great, thank you.
Great information to have, thank you. Any other questions? Going once? All right, seeing none. Thank you so much, we appreciate you presenting.
Thank you for your time.
Is there anything else you need from council today?
I think that's it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the 2025-2030 Capital Investment Program Review. Director Cochrane will be staying with us and introducing the item.
Good evening again, and thank you. Here to present the Capital Investment Program, which is one of my favorite things to work on, putting the budget together. I don't know why. It is super complex, it drives most people mad, but I love to sit in the room and figure this out. Working for the city as long as I have, it's been amazing to see this stuff come to life. So to walk down right now is just, it's amazing, and it's great, and I love what we do. So excited to be here to share this with you. Okay, I don't know what I did. So I will cover the forecast for you, and then we will go into each one of the investment areas. We will start with general government, which houses quite a bit of our programs and holds our facilities projects. We will then discuss parks, transportation, and the utilities. As mentioned earlier, Director Hamilton is not with us tonight, and so the directors up here will do our best to cover her work. So looking at the revenue forecast, we are, for the next six years, looking at a forecast of about $330 million. The development revenues that feed the program are being held at a level that we had predicted they would be at when we did the forecast for our current six-year CIP. We had assumed that we would start to see a dip in development-related revenues for the CIP. That includes impact fees and connection charges for the utilities. We've started to see a dip in that, and so we've held those pretty constant for the next biennium. The one big change that you can see is under other agencies. That spike is all your fault. That is, that is the Transportation Benefit District. That is a collection of nearly $60 million over that six-year timeframe, so you're, thank you, I really appreciate it. And seeing those dollars be put to use is really great. So the one concern that I have really about the program is we have continued to see our grant revenue fall. When we had the Great Recession, one of the choices that we had to make was staff reductions at that time, and some of the reductions came in those resources, that jobs were to go out there and seek external sources for us. So we've been discussing how to right ourselves on this topic, and you'll see some of that discussion when we get to the budget. I don't know. Why does it do this? I just quit. So, looking at how those dollars are allocated then over the six years, we'll be spending $392.5 million. The majority of that is going towards transportation, which is a major cost center for us, as well as to facilities. We have quite a few facilities projects queued up, including the Maintenance and Operations Center, which is quite a large project. For the 25, 26 biennium, we are looking at a spend of $131 million. That is essentially the completion of some of the major projects that we have underway right now. So we'll be seeing the senior center finish, and then we'll be rolling into some of our larger facilities projects and some things that we have queued up for parks. So I'll let, let's discuss those expenditure side of it right now, and I'll hand it over to Erin Burt.
Councilmembers, good evening. Erin Burt, Public Works Director, I will be covering for the general government and facilities, and also for the Parks Department. One thing I do want to point out, when you take a look at the projects that are being proposed for this year, you may see that the density of projects as compared to two years ago is less. And that was a deliberate decision that we made, the executive made, about our approach to the CIP process here in this biennium. I've made mention to this previously, but we need to take a hard look at how we propose, rank, and then develop capital improvement projects. And so our intent is to strip that whole process down in early 2025 and basically rebuild the whole CIP process in terms of how we bring projects forward for consideration in the next biennium, the 27, 28 biennium. So that is going to take us about two years, because if you look at the number of projects that we actually have in various plans, lists across all the four functional areas, we have a maintenance backlog roughly $600 million to $700 million. Obviously, looking at the six-year CIP, that's not going to fund it, so we need to be more strategic in terms of the projects that we're proposing to try to get the most bang for the buck. And how we've been doing that previously, of just kind of working our way through lists, is not getting us to where we need to be. So the focus for this year's CIP was, we've added a couple of projects into the six-year CIP that we'll be able to highlight, we've added a couple new projects that will go into construction in the next biennium, 25, 26. But our real focus in the capital division in this next biennium is to clear out our backlog of current CIP projects, so when we go into the next biennium, we'll be ready to go with the new process going forward. So a little bit of background information there for you. Next slide.
Easy for you to say.
Yes. I guess we need that innovation team here, working on this issue, to get the slides to move forward.
I really don't know. No, nothing. Okay, here's a map.
Why don't we start there at the map, and then we'll go into the financials? Well, previously, we don't want Kelly to go back to freeze the system up. We do, in your packet, we do have a map outlining where the projects are going to be undertaken here in the next biennium. And then moving on to the financial, what you have here is you're carrying costs that support the general government. City Hall Maintenance is our contract that we have with CBRE. We're still paying debt service on City Hall, and then we also have to pay in the General Fund overhead.
You have questions on that? Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you. Just a quick question on the map and the legend on there. I saw a couple of things, indicators that weren't over in the legend, and I just had a question about, over on the far east side of that map, I'm not sure what that's supposed to be. And I thought that it was interesting, so then when I went to go find it over in the legend, I still don't know what that is.
That's called the Redmond mystery spot.
Oh.
So--
I think that was in the appendices.
Yes.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know what that is either, but I circled it, and we will let you know.
And then we had what appears to be like a restaurant indicator down on Lake Simamish, and I was wondering if there was a new establishment that I didn't know about.
Not that I know of, but we'll get that clarified for you.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, you bet. It could be concessions at Idlewood Park.
Hmm.
Yes.
That makes sense.
I actually have an answer to this one, I believe. Those weren't necessarily meant to be very specific locations, they're programs and citywide indicators, so they're not specific to the geography. Thank you.
Yep, thanks. But I'll find out what the mystery spot is for you. I think that's the master plan. It's this one, I think that's the master plan for the new park up there.
Is that the correct slide?
All right. On to the next one. All right, on the programs component, just to highlight, the top one is our contribution support to Arch, and then we have our ongoing maintenance for the municipal buildings across the board, and then a new program that we're adding will be for the support for the Energy Smart East Side residential electrification program.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thanks. I wonder if we could hear more about the Housing Trust Fund contribution and the change that's expected across those two bienniums that are referenced.
And that's Carol.
Yes, I can speak to that. So the Housing Trust Fund is our Arch contribution, and is our Arch contribution. There is a bit of a change over the biennium because the dues for this program are being transferred to the CIP, because it all contains the responsibility of Arch to build housing faster. So it's actually, was previously in the operating budget, it was shifted to the CIP.
Any other questions?
I wasn't planning on going through any, all these projects individually, so if you have any questions on this, but there are a couple that I will point out, some actions that we're undertaking, so if you have any questions on these two, happy to answer.
Any questions on public safety or fire that we can get answers addressed? Councilmember Stewart.
Sorry. Director Helen, I am not clear that I understood, I was writing in my notes, that the contribution to Arch is moving to the CIP because, and then I, you know, I'm not understanding why the move to the CIP.
Right. So-- Under the terms of the interlocal agreement with Arch, we all have a requirement for specific dues. The dues go to the staff at Arch that actually, essentially are committed to building more housing faster. It is mostly for the development projects, managing the Housing Trust Fund, and then also monitoring assets and maintaining those assets after they're constructed. So that has traditionally been an operating expense that is now going to live in the CIP. I did a review of the financial policies with Kelly, and we contemplated that that would be a better spot for it than the place that it currently lives.
Okay, and to be very clear, like, very supportive of Arch, very supportive of the plan to build more affordable housing faster. Okay, thank you.
One more call for questions on the public safety and fire projects. Any questions? Okay, next.
So Director Cochrane called out the costing that we're going to be incurring on the Maintenance and Operations Center. So we are at a point where next week, we will be getting the initial look and cost options on basically three different proposals for the rebuild of the MOC. Once we sort through that and we see what the consultants deliver, we'll definitely come back and do a check-in with council on the direction that we're heading. But I do want to give you a heads-up that, based on some of the preliminary cost estimates for basic rebuild for the long-term needs of that facility, even with $150 million anticipated budget, we are probably short by about $75 million. I know that's a shocker, but more to follow. Once we have more information on that, then it will definitely be an opportunity to take a hard look at the assumptions that we're bringing to the table, and whether or not that's going to be the investment that the city needs to make in that facility going forward. So more to follow on that one.
Councilmember Fields.
What do you mean by "short"? Short, including all options for funding? Debt? Funds? Short in what regard? That we won't be able to borrow the--
No, so, Councilmember, right now, excuse me, Kelly has stashed away, excuse me, Director Cochrane has stashed away enough money in the mattress to account for $150 million right now. But there will be options that we can explore for debt financing over that amount, and that's where we need to come together and come up with a preferred alternative, and then bring those options back to council.
I'm still trying to understand the "short" part. If she stashed away under the mattress $150 million, where are we short?
Right now, in the CIP, in the six-year CIP, we've accounted for $150 million. The costs that we're looking at right now are about $225 million or more.
Okay, that's the piece.
That's the delta that we're going to have to address if we choose--
So we think the costs are higher?
Yes.
Okay. I do want to take a minute to remind the mayor's office that council has had a deep concern about this for the past three or four years, that we weren't going to have enough money to do this really important building, so I am a bit shocked, so just--
We look forward to having that conversation, yeah, once we have the proposal for you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart.
Same topic, but more specific question, and just to be clear. So I remember we were holding some REIT revenues for the MOC. Is it the REIT revenues alone that value $150 million, or some other wedges in that pie?
So when the Maintenance and Operations Center was first purchased and built, there are multiple owners. So there's General Fund, and then there is the utilities. So the cost of this program is spread across all of those different business areas, and so the General Fund is about 60% of the cost, utilities share 40% of that cost, that is then spread across the three utilities. So the $150 million goes across all of those programs. REIT is a component that does pay for the General Fund piece.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think my question, follow-up question on that is how, when we get to this conversation and when we get with a more secure number, I'm interested in how confident we will be in that number, as we've seen in my now-fifth year on council, we've seen many overruns, we've seen lots of project changes. Granted, the world has changed a lot in the last four years, but I think-- Granted, the world has changed a lot in the last four years, but I think we just, we all might have a little decision fatigue over numbers that keep growing exponentially. So we want to make sure we're as nailed down on that as possible.
But to be honest with you, unfortunately, I'm going to be able to bring you a range of numbers. I'm not going to be able to give you an exact number until we get into the commitment on doing the project and we get into design.
Right.
We're going to have to work in ranges on that and be comfortable with that.
Yeah. And I have faith in your ability to bring us into a range that is manageable and makes some sense. I know you've been doing a lot of work to make sure that we're not overestimating but being more accurate. So I'm hopeful that that conversation will be productive. Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you, Council Vice President. So with the numbers, just so that I, being newer, I want to make sure that I'm fitting my own expectations appropriately so I don't need to later be frustrated and adjust them. So if I'm looking at the MOC and it's reported $150 million for the project total, at first glance, I'm thinking that this is our ballpark for where it's going to land. But what I'm hearing is that this is actually the ballpark of what Director Cochran's been able to allocate for. But I wouldn't be seeing the 210 ballpark, 210 million? Is that?
So at the time the project was submitted into the process, the cost estimate was $150 million. Since we've been working our way through the process, just within the last few weeks, months, is when the number has been escalating. Until we find
Got it.
A good, solid range to feel comfortable with, I'm sticking with my $150 million.
Got it. Because I had recalled the 1.1 for Fire Station 17 because I was like, how in the world is a sighting costing that much on a mostly concrete building? So, but I remember seeing those numbers and I hadn't seen the 200 plus yet. And so that's why I was just making sure. Thank you.
Because that's the first time I brought that up.
Got it.
Yeah. And one other point I do want to call out. So when this project was added to the CIP six years ago, maybe eight, when it first started talking about, this number of 100 to 150 million was just a back-of-the-envelope guess. There was no analysis done at that time on whether or not that would be the cost. So Finance and Public Works up until this point have been working with trying to scope a project or look at the project in that ballpark. Last year, we started a master planning process and our initial numbers came back at over $300 million for that site, for the kind of bare bones. So we put a hard stop on that. We huddled back as staff with our stakeholders. We sharpened our pencils. We changed some assumptions. We reworked some options onsite and now we're able to neck that down into that 200 to 230 million range, just depends. And that is a very, right now going into it, a very conservative estimate, like because we need to be super conservative with our number right now. So that includes about a 35%, 40, about 35% design contingency where normally you'll carry about a 15% to 20% contingency. So we plus the numbers up so we can work back down from it rather than coming back and saying, hey, no, we need more money. So that's the process that we're looking at here. So when we come back and we provide you with a range of numbers, you know, we'll probably be at the 90% confidence level that that's where we're really going to hit.
And then just to recap then, being conservative in that we are somewhat over forecasting so that we can scale back instead of come back to the table and ask for more. Great. Thank you.
You bet.
Councilmember Anderson?
So I know this is a delicate balance of putting something on paper and then talking about it in public because the contractor will ask for what we say it is going to be. I'm just curious if, I appreciate the question from Ms. Nueva Camina. It was kind of along the same lines as well as, and this is for Ms. Cochran, is are we planning to, and maybe you can just give us some light on how you approach this because it sounded like we already have 150 million planned for. Can you tell us a little bit more about what the set aside value is? Like we clearly cannot go to construction today without some sort of financing approach. So in this, what we would expect next time we see this with these new numbers or whenever those are going to come to us, I think one of the things I hear from councils, we don't like to be surprised about that and we appreciate that you've told us today. So thank you. So we won't be as surprised. But understanding that this can change dramatically and then the bids may come in significantly differently as well, I think it'd just be really helpful to understand in terms of planning and the set aside. Ms. Forsyth has suggested the reserves and like sort of that bigger conversation about how do we know as council members that we have adequate funds set aside to commit to this project and meet the schedule that you're proposing? I think that would be really helpful. I'm not sure if there was a super question there, but perhaps.
I heard is to, next time that we are with council to discuss the MOC, what would be really helpful is to understand that the financial plan. And I think the other component of that is where are the weaknesses and where would we need to adapt it as this project moves forward? And I can certainly provide that for you.
That would be amazing. Thank you. And then just as a background detail that might be helpful is understanding sometimes the major projects, especially of this value, change what feels like dramatically and then understanding like the smaller projects that we typically do at the city, what kinds of things do cause those changes so that we're able to anticipate and feel more comfortable with them when they come to us? That'd be really appreciated too. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands? Go to the next slide.
Couple of new projects being added onto the CIP. We're fixing our leaky pond out front here on the building, which is a nice feature, but has been costing us a lot of money in terms of repairs because of some leaks. So we'll get in there and we'll get that fixed up, which would be nice.
Councilmember Stewart? Apologies.
Thank you. I'd like to ask a couple of follow-up questions about the Bellwether City Annex. This is super exciting because it's going to bring city government services to the Overlake neighborhood. It's helpful, I think, to hear a little bit more about how the city is planning for use of that annex. And I think for the council, you know, we often talk about our concern around displacement of local businesses in the neighborhoods and whatnot. This is an opportunity where the city, we are going to experience what it's like to need to do tenant improvements in a space that we plan to occupy, just like a small business would. So this is a place where we are going to be feeling it very personally. But could we hear a little bit more about how we intend to use that space?
Sure. Right now, we are coordinating with our community-based organizations that are also going to provide some space in that, in the base of that building, kind of on the area that faces Shen Street. And the plan for it right now, it's very conceptual, but is to provide some city services in Overlake, such as almost like a mini city hall model. We would potentially be able to do some business licensing. We would like to actually have a program that is tied to the work that the community-based organizations are going to do, which they plan to have an international kitchen, a big working kitchen on the other corner, with several organizations coming together and having food options and craft pop-ups. And then ours would be kind of support of the business communities in Overlake. So it's yet another operational plan to help support displaced businesses through economic development. We would also use it kind of a tourism center because it is the first light rail location that's entering the city of Redmond. So we would be able to coordinate with our, some of our biggest employers. Some of them you can actually visit and do tours. And that might be interesting to people where we would be able to hand out promotional information, talk about the space district, other aspects of the city. Also parks, locations that you can access or people coming in to go to events at Marymore Park. So that's what, like I said, very conceptual. This is bare bones estimate. We actually don't think there will be a tremendous lot of improvement beyond the purchase of the condo. And it's much, it's much cheaper for us to purchase it and to have that space than it is to pay for it over time. So we would have control of it and we would be able to have a presence there, also a landing spot for our police officers when they're in the area until there is a more built-out public safety presence in Overlake.
Wonderful. So that's so exciting. I hadn't realized that there would be a condo provision there, but that's awesome. So we will own that space in that facility outright. That's the city of Redmond making an investment in Overlake. Super exciting. Is the, so the, how much of the purchase slash construction is the purchase?
The, that is, oh, I actually don't know the answer to that question, but I can get it for you.
No, that's okay.
We're working on the agreements right now. So to understand the better cost.
Yeah, I understand it's probably a modest amount of space, but what a bargain deal for the city of Redmond to be able to purchase a piece of the neighborhood and to have a permanent presence there. So really supportive of this one. Thanks so much.
Thank you. I'll add and jump in on that one. I'm glad you mentioned the public safety element because I recall from the McKinstry report from years ago that we would definitely be needing, once Overlake is developed, we would be needing public safety presence in that area. So I appreciate that this will be used in that sense, but it sounds like there might be also plans in the future to develop other locations over there if I read into your comments.
Well, the comprehensive plan notes some of the facilities that are needed in Overlake. And so public safety facility is identified as one of the things that are needed in Overlake.
Yeah.
So there's nothing in the works right now. It's just that this actually is a placeholder for getting police an option, fire an option to be out into the community and have a touchdown spot at this location, not full-blown, but be able to be doing some community outreach in that location.
To pull a phrase from earlier, it would be a stopgap.
Correct.
Thanks.
Councilmember Saladin?
Yeah, I just want to appreciate, you know, the opportunity to have this location for not just first responders, but I like the idea where you mentioned the mini city hall. And I know that, you know, neighboring jurisdictions, Bellevue with their new, you know, mini city hall and North Bend with the substation, really having an all-encompassing area like this in Overlake would be really beneficial. So thank you.
Any other questions? All right. I'll move on to the next slide.
All right. Two projects upgrade to the infrastructure at Fire Station 11 and our continued build-out of EV chargers here at the municipal garage, moving into Phase 2.
Next slide.
And then final component to highlight here for facilities is we, Facilities Department had completed the facilities condition assessment. So this will be a programmatic implementation moving forward, small-scale dollars to fix some of those small-scale issues that were identified in the facilities condition assessment across the board.
I'm hoping it's a misnomer that there's a picture of the brand-new facility on this slide.
There will be no fixes there for five years.
Fantastic. Thank you.
I just wanted to share that because the facilities condition assessment was received after we started this process. The $300,000 is there to ensure that any small fixes that we need to address within the near term, we can do while the Facilities Department works on identifying bigger projects to address the more significant needs found in the plan.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. Moving on to Parks. Portfolio overview. Really no change from anything you've seen previously on the Parks Department. Representative example of some of the Parks projects that we'll be working on here in the next biennium. And then the financial component, debt service on the community center and then what gets paid into general overhead. So a highlight for this next biennium is the tree management program. So a tree health assessment was done. I think Parks might have come and briefed you previously on that. But what this is going to be doing is implementing the recommendations for tree health and tree replanting, not only in our parks, but also in the various right-of-ways that the parks maintains in conjunction with public works across the board. That will also include dollars for pruning and maintenance of the trees as well. Really no updates on the Redmond Central Connector, except for we go into construction here and that we should be complete with it next year, which is exciting, to get that one done.
Next slide.
I do want to point out, there's the parking lot repairs at Grass Lawn. Actually, we will be going to bid for this project here within the next two weeks. So there's a typo on the slide there. You'll, council will be seeing that bid package here shortly. Idlewood Park. So we've been doing some work out there. It hasn't started, but there's a lot of work that needs to be done in that parking lot, drainage improvements, repavement, ingress egress, traffic control and so forth. So that's what this project is going to be addressing. Well, we'll get that started here next year.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you and thanks, Director Burt. This was one of the priorities of the city during the legislative session and we all went to Olympia and some dollars were secured, although they may be, are they in the tentative bucket? They're not in the tentative bucket. Okay, great. So some dollars were secured for this. But I would just, it says on the slide that the project has been updated. So we were super familiar with the scope of that project back when we were in the middle of the ledge session, but if there are changes in scope that we should be aware of, it'd be great to just have a follow-up on that.
Yeah, I'll get the former details on it. I think we, what we were able to do actually with the updated is do more than we had originally expected with the dollars that we have available, but I'll find that out and let you know for sure. All right, next slide. So part of the analysis that was done is the ESAP and our Sustainable Vegetation Management Plan that we published, was this conversion of some of our right-of-ways into more of a natural state, which is great. I've done that at my parking strip at my house in Tacoma. I don't think my neighbors like how tall my grass is, but I got pollinators now, so I'm super excited about that. But I digress. But this is something that we're going to try to replicate in some of our areas that Parks has identified and get away from that crisp, pristine, you know, mowed look into a more natural state using natural vegetation, which is, reduces our water consumption and reduces our maintenance requirements as well.
I will jump in here and say I had an opportunity to finally ride the East Lake Sumamish River Trail that is fully paved now all the way to Sumamish and Issaquah. And a large section of that has wildflowers
Yeah.
Along the sides, which was clearly intentional by the city.
Beautiful.
And it's absolutely stunning and just super refreshing to ride by, walk by. So I'm very excited about that being in our city as well.
Yeah, and those are super easy to do. I mean, you've got to sow the ground and you drop them in there and then they're coming back year after year.
They do their work, yeah.
Yeah.
Mayor Bernie?
And we have a little bit of an experiment going on. Same idea, just up the road on 85th, the corner of 85th and 164th, we have a little, a piece of land that the city owns. And right now, there's a whole bunch of wildflowers that are blooming right now, including poppies. And it's really pretty to go by now instead of it being just mowed lawn. It's very nice.
It is nice to see the grass still tall at Grass Lawn as well, Grass Lawn Park.
I do want to call out for the East Redmond Corridor implementation. That's a project being added to the CIP, but we won't be starting design work on that until '27. But we're getting it into the CIP funding priority cycle.
Councilmember Saladin?
Yeah. My question was going to be on the design. It says '27 to '30, but above the project timeline is '30 to '31. So you are starting '27?
Yeah. So on some of these things, for us to add the project to the CIP, we get it in, in this biennium. It's called out in the out-years, but it's in the cycle for execution.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep. And then the, on the next slide, super exciting. We're going to And then the, on the next slide, super exciting. We're going to pull the trigger and do a permanent dog park installation there at McRedmond, Luke McRedmond Park. I don't know how big it's going to be, but people have asked for it, and the pop-up parts were successful. So they'll be moving forward with a permanent installation.
Fantastic. Have we, have we at all talked with King County about getting easement for their section of that lawn area? Are we planning to keep it the same as it is?
I don't know, but I'll make a note for it, and we'll find out on that.
Thanks.
Okay. And then moving on, so moving into initial design on the Southeast Redmond Neighborhood Park, which will be exciting to get after, and then also for the Smith Woods and Urban Center Playground Design. Once again, that's something that we're getting into the CIP now, but we'll start design on that in '27.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. The Southeast Redmond Neighborhood Park is another one of those bigger projects that we've known have been on the horizon and have been eager to get going on. Director Cochran, I don't remember, do we have any dollars set aside like we do for the MOC? You know, have we been, what is our plan for this 13 million?
I was able to fund this project with a combination of general fund transfer as well as impact fees. So this park is impact fee eligible, and so we do have it funded during this timeframe.
Well, that's interesting. So, and thank you for your work on that. So the impact fees, those are paid by development in other parts of the city and benefit the Southeast Redmond Neighborhood Park?
Typically, there's a nexus, but these have been impact fees that we've had collected for quite a while. So we are able to fund it, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. We had skipped over the new project for the Hartman Park Playground Replacement. With that being about $1.3 million, then since this is a replacement, are impact fees able to go towards this project as well, or only new?
Only to new, only for things that are adding capacity. So these kinds of dollars would need to come from some more of our discretionary, so REIT or a transfer from general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Two other things. So we're going to be focusing on sports court replacement at those locations. That will be a '27 start for those initial design and court replacement. And then also, we're going to be pulling out the paintbrushes and doing some external painting on numerous Parks facilities across the portfolio. And then the final component is adding for some, let's see, I wasn't, yeah, infill material for the current synthetic fields. But I guess my understanding is that the initial turf that got laid, there was some issue with the infill, basically it's low, it needs to be replenished, and that's what this project will be doing.
All right, moving on to transportation, capital facilities. You're familiar with the program, Reliable Multimodal Transportation System that supports safe and efficient movement of people and goods. We have lots of system improvements currently and many projects in the queue. Erin and I are going to split up this part of the presentation. Ours from Planning and Community Development, ours functional area projects that ultimately are turned over to CIP for construction. And then Erin will be speaking to the TOSA Group Projects, the Transportation, Operations, Safety and Engineering Projects on the second part of the presentation. So long-term portfolio management has not, we don't have any changes or updates to this. We obviously are focused, though, on improvements to access to light rail. That has been a council priority, and with light rail coming, it has been an area that we have prioritized. And I don't know if, are there any questions on the management piece, long-term management? With respect to the map, these should look familiar. We received the same maps during our last budget cycle, and we do use those little, small icons to tell you the kind of geographic location and the type of project, so you can get a sense of where they are throughout the city. With respect to the financials, these are the same ones you've seen for the other projects. If Kelly has anything to expand upon, any questions? Okay. And then projects, we just have, oh, program, sorry about that. We do have our Bridge Structure and Repair Program. I think we might have identified what those projects were on the east side of Redmond. They might have been Bridge Structure and Repair Program projects. The channelization improvement, some street lighting, pavement, all the programs essentially come together to give us long-term improvements to our system and also some maintenance. I only have six projects to look at. They're, the first two are already both existing in the CIP. These are projects that were funded through the Capital Facilities District. The only reason they're brought to your attention right now is that years are being shifted a little bit out farther. Microsoft had to recertify or re-petition to revise the scope of CFT, the CFD, and that petition is ongoing, and we'll be, we'll be able to hold a public hearing on that scope change quick soon. So it took a little bit longer than we anticipated, but these projects will be ready to go next year. The next projects, Overlake Access, Overlake, oh, that was the other one. Then the Bellred Buffeted Bike Lanes, is that where we are?
Yes.
Yep. I'm sorry, you're using a slide deck that's different than the one, I think we made a change.
Oh.
That's okay.
This is what's in our packet.
Yes, the slides were flipped. Sorry. Can you go back to the last slide for just one second? The, oh, interesting. Can you go back to that?
So programs, and then we started to...
Right, okay. So the 150th Avenue Improvement is obviously completing missing bike lanes. I'm sorry, the tiles got rearranged from the show that I was anticipating. This one is going to, from, this one is an upcoming activity that we're bringing to your attention. It's going from into its design and in construction phase, and will be bike lane connections. The Bellred Buffeted Light Bike Lanes from West Lake Samamish Parkway to 30th is one that the council has been interested in over time, and that also is moving from design into construction in the next CIP.
A question on that one. What conversations have we had with Bellevue to ensure that the connection between our cities is continuous?
So that's a great question, because we actually answer it in these six slides. The Bellred Buffeted Bike Lanes actually go to 40th, the pavement. The Bellevue Buffeted Bike, the Bellred Buffeted Bike Lanes actually go, they repurpose the uphill lane to the buffered bike lanes on, at Northeast 30th, and there is already Bellevue Bike Lanes between Northeast 30th and the 2800 block of Bellred. So in fact, this will complete the buffered bike lane from West Lake Samamish Parkway all the way to the connection where Bellevue has started. And Bellevue's actually contemplating putting in, well, they're actually already funded, putting in a signal at the 2800 block of Bellred that will also add continuity into the neighborhoods to the east.
Thanks.
Yes. Okay. Overlake, the accessibility improvement was one of the CFD projects that I just described. And then the 70th Street Improvement is actually a new project. No, oh, I'm sorry. The 70th Street Improvement is the, constructing a new, that is a new street segment between Redmond Way and 180th. And actually, this one is at 100% design, and we're currently negotiating with the property owner for the land, for the land acquisition. Okay, these are the two new projects. Sorry, Bellred West Lake Samamish Parkway Roundabout. That is, actually, we've done some initial design and concluded that we can put a roundabout in the area of the right-of-way. And so this project, new project, would essentially start design activities, more thorough design activities. And by adding it to the CIP, it obviously makes it also eligible for grants. The 156th Shared Use Path, also a new project. It's going from the 43rd 100 block to 51st Street, so it's continuing the, the, basically the path that is already across the Microsoft frontage, and a little bit to the north farther to 51st. And this will essentially, it's the current phases design, it'll be going into construction.
Okay, on to me. So this is a continuation of our ADA ramp and curb improvements. The money funded here will be in addition to the projects that we're funding as part of the Transportation Benefit District. So we're trying to maximize the amount of money that we're putting towards ramp improvements and curb cuts, and considering the backlog within the city, every dollar that we can put towards this has a benefit. And we've talked to you about the adaptive signal controls downtown. Continuation, so we'll point out on the pedestrian bicycle safety improvements on Northeast 40th, the project timeline on that is '25 to '27, and this is constructing a new shared use path on the south side of Northeast 40th. We're going to upgrade some road crossings and also enhance the pedestrian experience with lighting as needed. This is the shared use pass and path, excuse me, and we'll also be making some necessary road improvements for pedestrian bicycle safety along the lines there. So this ties in with the work that we're also already doing on 40th. For the sidewalk improvements, that's the big hilly slope sidewalks that we're looking to get completed this year. But just note, we'll do the sidewalks, but we're not actually funded or looking to repave 40th as a whole, probably until about 2030 or 2032. So it will continue to be an iterative process there as we build out that corridor.
Quick question on that. Is that the project we just sent to design?
Yes, yeah. So that's the north side, and this is funding for the south side as well. Yep. Next slide. A couple pavement management projects. For you, happy to answer any questions. The West Lake Samamish Parkway, the north of Marymore, it's going to be about 2.72 lane miles. That's an asphalt overlay, and also include full-depth repairs, and we're going to be doing some channelization on that for traffic management and replacing some utility lids along that. And then on the Northeast 24th Street to 172nd, that's going to be 3.64 miles of asphalt overlay. There are some areas that we've identified that we're going to have to dig in and do full-scale repairs to the road. That's going to add a buffered bike lane, 19 curb ramp upgrades. We're going to add 31 LED light fixtures, and some utility lid adjustments as well. And then as part of this, through our utility funding and utility projects, we're also going to be doing installation of new water storm and sewer pipes along those, along that project. And the design contract, this may sound familiar, we brought to council recently on that, so we're moving forward on it.
Councilmember Fields. There you go. You got it.
I think I've asked this before, but how do you decide where, yeah, how do you decide where the pavement overlays go? Is it high-traffic areas, it's degraded to a level of, you just can't stand it anymore? I mean, how do we, how do we prioritize?
So we have a pavement condition index, which every lane mile of the city is rated from 0 to 100. You repave or rebuild a street, that's going to be 100. Over time, asphalt breaks down, and that condition index begins to drop. And so every two years, we go out and we gather the pavement condition index. So it's like a nice little robot car that goes out, measures the streets, takes video, can tell the depth of the asphalt, and it grades the condition of the asphalt. What we strive to do, and Redmond's been very fortunate in this, is keep a PCI level of 70 or higher on the majority of our streets. Some of these projects that we identify, you know, for example, if we have a failing stormwater or a water system, and we know we need to go in and dig up the street, then we may look at doing a complete street rebuild. That PCI may not necessarily be screaming for a new overlay or a street rebuild at that time, but if we're going to go in and dig up the street, we want to try to kind of get the full-meal deal and do everything at one time. So the conditions at these locations for these overlays, right, so you have a, just an asphalt overlay, and you have a grind-in overlay, and then you have a street complete rebuild. So an asphalt overlay, you're taking off a bit of the top layer, and then you're putting down a fresh coat of asphalt on top of that. That's going to give you probably 15 to 20 years lifespan on that area that you have redone. So that's what we're focused on in these areas.
Okay. I mean, the robot car, that's one of your key tools?
Yeah, so there's a, there's a company that we use. It's called StreetScan.
Got it.
It's the same company that we used when we brought in, did the pavement, excuse me, the sidewalk condition index as well that we shared with council earlier in the year. They go out, they do the assessment, they give us the data, they give us the ratings, then we build the pavement management plan from there.
Got it. It's probably better than my anecdotal motorcycle riding around the City of Redmond, but I have to say it again. The roads coming down Old Redmond Road from 148th down to West Lake Samamish are super dangerous for bicycles and motorcycles, super dangerous. There are so many, and it's a turn, a series of turns there that make it that much more dangerous. And you can't, on a bicycle, can't always stay in the bike lane coming down that hill. You sometimes have to get on the road, so.
I made a note of that, Councilmember Fields, and I'll get with our folks, and let me, let me take a look to see where that's at on the list and what the condition is there. Yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'll jump in and second that. As I've ridden that section frequently, and I always go into the drive lane because it is much, much safer. I do know we did some repairs recently, but definitely interested in seeing what else could be done there.
Sure.
Follow-up question, and then Councilmember Stewart. The 20, 15 to 20-year lifespan of the regrading for the asphalt, does that take into account climate change, and we're seeing much more freeze thaw, freeze thaw, which definitely impacts our asphalt? I grew up in the Midwest, so I'm used to really bad roads. A lot of folks around here claiming how bad our roads are, and I just kind of, in my head, think about where I grew up. So I'm hoping that, you know, we're taking that into account with these projects as well.
Absolutely. We have not seen a major impact on the asphalt conditions because of freezing and thawing, but it's something that we are aware of, and we continue to monitor how we deal with that. If a certain road begins to, you know, show signs of cracking, we don't want to do a full overlay, we'll go out and do the chip seal on that, or even a slurry seal across that area as well.
Great, thanks. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thanks. Happy to support the pavement management projects. Your predecessor, Director Burt, gave us a presentation on the pavement condition index, and my colleague dubbed it "The Scary Bedtime Story." So glad to see us making these investments that are really needed. And I know we've kind of briefly discussed the StreetScan technology, just for the viewing public. We had a study session on that earlier in the year. That was April 23rd, in case anyone wants to look back.
That one was focused on sidewalks, yep.
Next slide.
So what I do want to bring up is, we still have on the CIP our Northeast 95th Bridge Replacement Project. We've kicked around many different ideas on this, on this project. Everything from... Everything from putting in, taking a 20-foot span and replacing it with a 40 or 50-foot span, to maybe just taking that out completely, putting in a bicycle and pedestrian span. But we, we think we have a way forward on this project to be able to construct it to where we meet the requirements of the state, and it's not so onerous, that it's a large structure, still compact, be able to get some pedestrian and bike improvements on that, and still seek federal funding potentially for replacement on that. So we'll be bringing something forward for council's consideration in 2025 on this one. And then just to note on the traffic and pedestrian safety enhancements, this is our continued effort and process to install flashing crosswalks and other in-safety, pedestrian safety locations.
I think we're out of order here again. Oh, there we go. Sorry.
Should be on that one. Yeah. Okay, next slide. So we had a project on this year's CIP dealing with some work on Cleveland Street. Because of the nature of all the construction on Cleveland, new projects coming in, we determined that it's not feasible to do the complete rebuild of the sidewalk right now. We do understand that there are still hazards in that area, but what we're going to do is go in and do some minor improvements and then bring that back as a larger project. Once the development in and around Cleveland Street solidifies and finishes here in the next probably three to four years, we'll be coming back for a larger rebuild on that one. So two more pavement management projects. The one on 154th, that's 1.45 miles, lane miles of asphalt overlay and trying to channel, new channelization, excuse me, and also some traffic replacements for the signals. And then on the 154th, that's going to be added into the 2027 biennium. This is going to be, once again, pavement rehabilitation, overlay, traffic loops, and ADA upgrades across the board there. And next slide. See, which one do you have up there?
Pedestrian Safety Improvements at Sliplanes.
Yes, great. So we've heard the message from council about sliplane safety. So this is going to be a pilot program that we are going to implement. We have a couple of locations that we're looking at doing this, but what it's going to do is to enhance that pedestrian safety focus using channelization markings and signals at those locations to provide that pedestrian crossing access and curbing, curbing for sliplanes. So more to follow on that one. And then the Accessible Pedestrian System, the APS upgrade. So what this does is it's going to upgrade existing pedestrian push buttons to accessible pedestrian signals at 10 different signalized intersections. And what that does is APS provides the audible and tactical, tactile information for the sight impaired. So it's the beeping sound that you'll hear. And we'll also be updating, excuse me, where is that? Some of the rapid flashing beacons as well to this technology. So as we get into the design and the locations, we'll bring that back to council and let you know where we're doing that going forward. And then the final component that we have is a continued focus on pedestrian safety. And this is going to install, basically if you come up to make a right-hand turn, somebody's pressed the button, it will flash a no right turn signal. You've probably seen those in other jurisdictions. It's another visual reminder, there's no free right when people are crossing the street. So more to follow on that one as it comes up. But that's going to be initially focused down here in the downtown core.
Councilmember Stewart, sorry.
Yeah, thanks. Actually, I just wanted to confirm, I think we have a couple of these. Isn't there one at the entrance to 520? Is it the same style?
Yes, that's a state system, so, but yeah, it's similar to that.
And there's one on 148th now too. And I will just say, like, that has drastically improved the user experience and safety of an intersection like that. So really happy to see us continuing to invest in those solutions. I think that's really smart.
Councilmember Salhoudin.
Yep, thank you. And I'm sure that this will already be done, but just to confirm, for the traffic management that we discussed, will this all be integrated with that, with what we're doing in downtown?
Yeah, with the adaptive signals, absolutely. Yeah. In those areas where these things get installed, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. I'm excited about that project as well. I actually, just anecdotally, had to look up the law that you could turn right on a red arrow because that's not the case in most other states. So I think this is just a common sense move that we can take to further our pedestrian experience.
Yep.
Councilmember Stewart?
As we wrap up the transportation section, then I just want to say, you know, we hear the community loud and clear, the interest in improving, and then the need to improve safety for all users on our roads, our sidewalks, our streets, all of it. And there's some really significant investment being made in this portion of the CIP, and so I'm really looking forward to moving this along. Thanks.
It's going to be two great years of pedestrian infrastructure getting installed, so it'll be good. All right, moving on to the utilities function, next slide. So this has all three components of water, wastewater, and stormwater for you. Showing you where we're going to be making our investments here on the next biennium. The water portfolio, we've shared these stats with you before, just need to reemphasize, quite a bit of our infrastructure was built out 40, 50, 60 years ago, and we're definitely at that point of reaching the end of its useful life. For example, with water, our efforts to replace AC water pipe. But as time goes on, we are expecting to see more breaks in our system. And one of the things, I think I mentioned previously, that we will begin working on next year, after our water system plan gets updated, our stormwater plan and our wastewater plan, we'll be able to consolidate all three of those and begin to draft a larger pipe replacement strategy going forward for the city. So more to follow on that. No change to our long-term portfolio management strategies. One thing to point out, so we do share a couple of water reservoirs with our neighbors, one of which being is Kirkland. Through our inter-local agreement, we have the responsibility to fund a portion of a reservoir replacement. We just recently saw an initial proposal from Kirkland on that reservoir replacement there on the east side of, excuse me, on the west side of the city. Don't have a definitive timeline yet on when that project is going to be going forward, but as we get more information on that, we'll let council know. But this is our contribution to that project moving forward. No real updates on these two projects. Happy to ask any, answer any questions for you. Continuing with our telemetry upgrades, and then also, so Phase 2, 3, and 4, these are paying off for us as it's reducing our maintenance costs, response times, as we upgrade this equipment that we're able to monitor and control our water infrastructure. So it's definitely been a benefit to us across the organization as a whole. Pilot program that we're running up on Novelty Hill that will come into fruition here in 2025, where we're going to be replacing all the meters up there to advanced metering technology, so we can read those remotely. Looking forward to getting those installed and then using this as the testbed on whether or not we roll that out citywide into all our other water meters going forward. And then, as mentioned previously, and very, we're very thankful, we just recently received a million dollars from Representative Del Benet to go towards our AC water main pipe replacement effort. So that million dollars and then the money that we're receiving here in this biennium will get us started on some of those AC pipe replacements. And then the final project, the new project here for the water is we need to upgrade the Novelty Hill water tank. That is not the water tank on Novelty Hill, just so you know, but we wanted to show a tank. And so we need to do some seismic retrogrades to bring that tank up to code on Novelty Hill. And then it's also a process of getting in there, and we replace the pumping equipment, the valves, and then we do a painting inside and outside to extend the life of that system. And that tank up there, Novelty Hill, just a little fact for you, it's 3 million gallons, and it was originally built in 1999. So moving on to wastewater. No real change, anything on wastewater? Same comments about our system health and pipe health and age, something that we will be addressing here in the next couple of years for council. Moving on to the projects. No real updates or change. We're continuing to move forward with the lift station upgrade program, and then the control system and telemetry upgrades, moving into Phase 4 on the wastewater across the Next slide. So wastewater pipe rehabilitation, one of the things that we're doing, there's a couple different ways to fix a pipe. You can go in, you can tear it up and put in a brand-new one, or you can use a system called lining. So essentially, you're putting a PVC-type material, shooting it down the length of a pipe, seals it internally. It's not going to give you a long lifespan of 50 years, but it is an opportunity, depending on the challenges that you have on where a pipe break has happened, or where you need to make an immediate upgrade or investment, can give you anywhere from a 15 to 25-year lifespan using the lining process. So we're focusing one of our projects on that. And then the final component for us, the new project, it may seem kind of minuscule at $60,000, but we have these variable drives that basically lift wastewater. The drives that we have in a couple of these locations are no longer manufactured. We've bought out eBay and every other location for spare parts, and we're just at that point where we need to make the investment and purchase some new variable drives. So that's what we're looking at doing there.
Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you. Director Burke, going back just real quick, back to the pipelining. We talk a lot about being over budget or asking for more money. Have we taken a look at how much this, I think this is wonderful and brilliant, how much of a cost savings this is going to be for us?
It really depends on the environment that you're doing, I should say, the geology of where that pipe is can really drive the cost, right? So it all depends on what you have to dig up to get down into the pipe. What you can do on these pipelining projects is you can actually go down into a manhole where the sewer is coming through, right? So we have catch basins underneath the manholes where pipes come in, and you can gain access to pipes that way. You shoot the lining down there. So you're not digging up anything. All you're doing is climbing down a hole with the equipment to put the lining in. So there's considerable cost savings there when it comes to design, construction mobilization, traffic control, staff time, and so forth. But it really depends on where you have the anticipated or the anticipated failure, and then how you can access it, is how we make those decisions.
Great. Sounds like a lot of money that we're going to be saving.
Yes. It is pretty considerable.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay, and then the final component is to stormwater. Interesting tidbit, we manage about 11 billion gallons of stormwater for the annual rainfall that works its way, works its way through the environment and to our streams, lakes, and river every year. So that's a Christmas party fact that you can throw out next time you have it. So a couple of things I do want to point out about our long-term portfolio management. So you can have individual stormwater controls on a per parcel basis, or you can also have it in a regional component. And so here in the downtown core, we have a regional stormwater facility that drains out, it gets treated through a series of filters, and then it goes out into the Samamish River. And then we also have the large vault system, two systems up in the overlake area. And then also, there are smaller, smaller facilities that manage the stormwater. But what we try to do here in the larger, denser areas is go to that regional facility concept. And one of the things we have identified long-term is up in the overlake area, as it continues to grow out, that we're going to need to install a third regional facility vault in that location. So we're doing more work on that. We're not prepared to bring a proposal in front of council anytime soon, but we are going to be doing some additional stormwater modeling in the next biennium to get us to that decision point moving forward. Financial, that's just a, basically a placeholder for us. This is $200,000 we're anticipating getting from the county for a culvert replacement as part of the Lake Hills trunk line project, but that's not money that we're spending at this time. And on to the next slide. So Evans Creek, as mentioned previously, will be coming for construction in next year once we get our final FEMA permit. So looking forward to getting that project up and running finally in 2024. And, let's see, I can't, Evans Creek, next slide. Yeah, happy to answer any questions that we have on the next four projects there. Excellent.
Councilmember Anderson.
Just wanted to say, I'm looking forward to the Evans Creek relocation project and the 95th Street Bridge project as well. Just, thank you.
Okay, next slide. And next slide. And we are adding two new projects in stormwater. One is a ravine stormwater bypass. So in the location there off of, I guess it is Ravine Street, right? I don't know, I guess I'm confused. I'm sorry. Yes, it's called 9200 Ravine. What you end up having right now is stormwater comes down the street, gets into this ravine, scouring, tearing away the ravine. So this will be putting in a bypass of 2,200 feet to capture that stormwater and get it into our conveyance system moving forward.
Is this in North Redmond? I think, I feel like we've talked about this one.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you. Curiosity question on the Monticello Pond major sediment removal. When we dredge a stormwater pond, what do we do with the sediment?
It gets dumped. So we have a decant facility. Thank you, Director Cochran. I was thinking of wine there for a minute. So out at the MOC, we have a facility, so where our street sweeper, or when we dredge or anything out of our vector truck, we go and we dump the sediments there. It is considered then hazardous waste, and so then we pay for a company to come in and haul it away and do, take care of it for us. haul it away and do, take care of it for us.
And do we follow up on that? Do we do any type of testing to see, like, what's going into our stormwater ponds?
What's in the sediment?
What's in the sediment?
Not that I know of, off the top of my head, but what we do find, we are doing regular sampling in these stormwater ponds for various contaminants throughout the course of the year. So that's where we're capturing that information, but not when we pull the sediment out.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, final project for stormwater for us is every, if you go onto the next slide Every biennium, we try to do a stream restoration or habitat project. High School Creek right now is one of the city's identified priorities for watershed restoration, and this will be installation of large woody debris and some other habitat improvements within that waterway moving forward. And that does it for CIP Capital. Pending your questions.
Thank you. Any more questions from council? Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. My questions are actually on this very last slide. We have our first public hearing coming up next week, so this is, of course, a great time for the public to let us know their thoughts on everything they heard tonight, and including, I'm always curious, you know, if folks feel like something's left out, this is a good time to speak up. But so, the notice of the hearing, can you just remind us when that will, it's already in our extended agenda, but how will the public hear about the hearing, and what materials will they have to respond to for the hearing?
So there is a press release that was taken care of for the public hearing. There are no materials available. So if members of the public would like to come and speak, they will just need to sign up for the public hearing and then declare what project or what issue they would like to share with us. Thank you for the question.
Any further questions?
So we will have the public hearing next Tuesday. We have three additional public hearings in the fall, and certainly our welcome, you know, comments about our capital program or our business technology program any time along the way. The next time that you have to share 100 slides with me is in September, so I appreciate the last two evenings with you. We'll really go in-depth into the forecast, both capital, if anything's changed, as well as what we're seeing for general fund, and utilities, other major funds that we have. And then we'll start council deliberations after we deliver the budget to you in October. So thank you again for another lengthy evening, but a lot of information, and I appreciate all the questions.
All right. Any final questions or comments or concerns, thoughts on the CIP? Great. Seeing none. Thank you all so much. I know that was a lot to get through and had some glitches, but we made it, so appreciate it. Absolutely. All right. That brings us to our last item, which is council talk time. I know we touched on a couple items in our little gap earlier. Does anyone else have anything they would like to talk about for council talk time? Yeah, Councilmember Anderson.
If anybody wants some plums, I've got some. I just was curious, there was a public safety funding subcommittee, since it got brought up today, and I was wondering if, who was on it? Is it Melissa, excuse me, Ms. Stewart and?
And Councilmember Saludin and Council President Kritzer.
Oh, got it. Okay. And then, one of the questions that came up was to make sure that we were funding it, and I did draft a proposal for it, similar to last time's levy with a smaller amount, and you have that, is that correct? Okay, cool. I didn't want to do that. The reason I brought that up is I just wanted to share a story and offer some appreciation to Redmond police, who are underappreciated, so, but this is a different, it's a different story. It's actually the first time that I was in a police car, was when I was in San Francisco, and I was in the middle of a BART station at 11:00 PM, and I was sitting and waiting for the train. And two young gentlemen came up and ran by and stole my laptop computer. And so what did I do? I ran screaming through the BART station after them. But I did want to say that the Oakland PD was the first responder on site for helping me out, and they recovered the computer, and then they also found the suspects, and I was able to decline to prosecute because they were juvenile. So I thought that was something to say, just the way they handled it was very professional. I've seen the same performance from our police department as well, and I just wanted to offer appreciation for that and make sure that we get them paid.
Thank you. Appreciate the story. Councilmember Stewart?
Thanks. Yeah, I'll just speak, you know, briefly, as I shared at the committee reports last week at our business meeting. We have had one meeting to date. We have another scheduled for that public safety funding subcommittee at the end of this month. There are two study sessions of note on the horizon, that looks like one is on the 23rd of July, and then another on August 13th, which will be opportunities to hear a little bit about more about what we learned in that very first meeting, but it was a productive conversation moving forward, and really wrestling with what is the scope of the gap that we are looking at. Would you say, anything to add, Councilmember Saludin?
No, that covers it.
Thank you for the update. Any other items for council talk time? All right. Seeing none, I will just again encourage everyone to attend Derby Days this weekend, Friday and Saturday. And with that, that concludes the items for our agenda this evening. If there's no objection, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.